I'll call the selectmen's meeting to order at 7:04. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have a 7:15 meeting, so we'll stay on schedule for that. And take a few things in the meantime. Well, I note that we got hours, minutes here. Which I haven't had a chance to read, Anthea, the balls from our court. I don't know if anybody else did.
I read a couple of them, and I couldn't remember anything.
All right. Okay. Next, so we'll pass that over.
I do have a request, a public records request for the Mets, and they do, they would still need to be released even in draft form under the law. Clearly not executive session, but.
Yeah. Mark and draft.
Yes, they will be marked draft.
Or you could go back and say, we're likely to approve a slug of them next week if they wanted to wait. I mean, they can do that if they like. All right. We have a reserve fund. Transfer request from the accountant. Transfer the amount of $4,718. This is to pay the wages of the accounting clerk for the remaining part of the year. She's been averaging 22 to 29 hours a week. They'll be cutting back to only 20. Payroll issues were causing extra work. And six months delay, they had some personnel issues. And there was obviously been additional workload in her department that was not anticipated. I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
She's very happy with this system of hers.
Yes. Yep. So no other comments or questions?
No.
Here are none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
This is from you, Mary. Weatherbug and Conservation Commission accessible trail question. It's from you. You mentioned when Barry and Pat Smith were here, your idea of an alternative.
Sorry, this is putting together one master article on the alternative approach of mitigation money.
Right.
Did not pursue, yes.
And what I said was, I thought that BMS would only go forward with this if they had the funding.
They actually just submitted today a capital article.
I told her she needed to put a capital article on today.
And they didn't.
Because you have to have a capital article to have it voted at ten meeting, even if the funding's coming from Highland Commons. But they didn't intend to pursue it if they didn't get the Highland Commons money.
Okay. Okay, I thought, actually, that our award would be sufficient, but we can put another one on if you like. Okay, and then Conservation Commission, would you intend to go forward with that, seek money?
No, you know, my feeling is, I was late in getting it in. If everybody else did, I probably had something to say, number one. But number two, it isn't much money. And I think it's legitimately can be taken out of our money. We've got $700,000. Use that, I really do.
So you'd rather, you'd like to withdraw the application?
Yeah, on the one for the seven grand.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and that takes, that takes care of that.
So did you want, do you want articles for 1870 and for historical for the Bullard House? Alternative.
For the Highland Commons. So we promised that with the mitigation money, that the town would vote on it also.
Yes.
So the only way to vote on it is to have it as an article and have the source of funding, the Highland Commons.
Correct, and we were going to put that article on.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Language to follow later, well, you can do that later.
Correct, when we do the award, we were going to make the article.
That's one, well, it would be articles.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
For each award, there'll be an article.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we have fiscal year '17 budgets.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we going to, I don't think, I don't recall us actually voting and really discussing. I thought we were going to wait until tonight for these, like, first three.
And we are, but we have a meeting at 7:15.
Okay, so we will.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I just thought that there would be some discussion on that, and I thought we could get a couple.
Good idea.
Move things out of the way before 7:15, absolutely. The fire budget we discussed yesterday, it's been submitted with that further adjustment to the rate increase?
It is on page one of his budget, but the payroll sheet, I asked him to update, it still says 3 percent. So that'll follow, but the page one.
But the figures here reflect?
He has told me so, I did not check.
Okay.
If you look at, the one in your hand is updated, and underneath is the former.
So it's just the updated version?
Okay.
That is, that is the latest.
The one this morning, it's newer than the one we got this morning.
You got this this afternoon, it's actually date stamped in the bottom at five o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, there's tons of changes.
Okay. Well, no, I was thinking of the one at Castle Planting.
This has a.
Yeah, they wouldn't have had that.
Okay.
This has diminished numbers, it seemed right, and his cover memo, which is attached, says he's adjusted this. Okay, so I'd take a vote to approve and send along to FinCom the combined fire and EMS emergency management budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
He saw FinCom last week and told them that there would be, it would be lower. In fact, he might have given them the lower version of that budget.
Okay.
You met with them first and then using them.
We met with them on Wednesday, yeah.
All right. Pause the paper. This one is the building department. And.
You're adjusting our hours to 19 hours a week.
Yep. This shows the additional 19 hours. An increase in Larry's assistant with a 2.5. And the rest of it is level funded.
Could we hold that off until item 2B? They're sort of interrelated, and I don't quite understand 2B, so when we get down and discuss them both together.
2B?
Or not 2B?
Yeah.
2B or not 2B?
Article 2B is on at your request.
That's right.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
Ober conservation grant filing.
So this is connected to Larry Brand's budget?
Yeah, it has to do with what services, you know, I can expect from this office versus there. We had a brief discussion of it last week, and I didn't think any conclusion has, but there's an email here to.
Okay, off the better side.
Just hold it till then.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that was confusing.
Okay, this is for streetlights, it's level funded.
So moved.
I think you could actually lower that a little.
Really?
Well, we, it's level funded from last year, and we now have a third-party provider for supply, and we just signed that net metering contract. Is it 20,000, what's the cost?
9,600. And we actually had to transfer 534 at the end of the year.
Well, then leave it.
Okay.
How are we this year? Last year was when they.
She projects that if 800 to 1,000 a month for the last five months of this year, we may be short again a little bit this year. So that's why she recommended level funding if your third-party vendor supplier is kicking in mid.
Yeah, fiscal year '17.
Well, we already have a lower rate right now. We're using Hampshire Power until May 1st. And hopefully by June 1st, we'll have our competitive bid supplier. Then leave it.
Okay.
I know that we were short money.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, the vote is for level funding on the streetlights, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to our 7:15 budget presentation from Assavet.
Tom, you remember Ernie and Chris.
Yes, indeed. Nice to meet you again.
You too.
Hi.
Had a chance before you got in to make introductions and reintroductions.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
It's once again a privilege to, and our pleasure to come before you to present the FY '17 budget for Assavet Valley as your career and technical school for residents of the town of Berlin. A couple of noteworthy projects, I'll just bring to your attention, you know, it was a year ago, just a few days on the job when I first started, meant for you. Over the past year, we have done a couple of noteworthy community projects. One being an installation of a generator that was done at the emergency management department for the town of Berlin. And then also, we did something for the senior center council on aging with the bus that they had.
Right, you did.
Yeah, they had actually contained, we had done some, we thought it was just going to be a simple, putting the name on the side of the bus, but it needed some bodywork as well, and we were able to take care of that.
And that's great.
Have the students have some real-life applications, so. As you know, Assavet Valley continues to provide high-quality career and technical education to the students that come from Berlin. We have, happy to say and happy to report that we have had no issue this year with getting some names of the students in seventh and eighth grades. I know there was a question last year about access. There are some new regulations that require that in the Berlin-Walston School District, so please to share that with us. We do still have some challenge where we don't have this opportunity for the Berlin students to tour on our tour days that we offer. However, we do, are allowed to go in and do a presentation for those students so they can understand the opportunities at Assavet. Just quickly.
During lunch?
Yeah, yeah, it's during lunch. But, you know, we'll continue to work on community relations with the school district. Couple of things to note, just in your back and on the first page, this is again a student performance profile. We've updated, you had a total of 26 students as of October 1st figure. Of those, you can see kind of where they're located within the shop choices, second portrait down on the page. And then down below, you'll see the class of 2015, there were seven graduates from Berlin, and kind of what their post-graduation plans were. So two of them are four-year public school, one are four-year private, one that went into continued advanced technical training, went into work in terms of military. One of the things that we're proud of is the opportunities and the options that we provide our students. As you can see during their high school education, those seven graduates were part of the number of 236 students who graduated that were able to obtain 796 additional credentials beyond their high school diploma and their certificate of proficiency within their career field. One of the mindsets, you know, I think the mission of Assavet is, of course, to provide high-quality career and technical education, but we're moving that perception that it's not like it has been in the past. It's strictly not a place for kids that either don't like to learn, or they have discipline problems, or behavioral problems. We're really looking at it as we provide options to students. They have a good foundation, lifelong skills, teamwork and critical thinking skills in order for that student to go out and be job-ready and go into the workforce. They also have the option, as you can see from the postgraduate plans, to go into college, advanced technical training, two or four-year degree. Military, they can be an entrepreneur if they're, you know, sharp and have the ability to go out and start their own business. They have that as well. And the other thing is that, you know, like any traditional high school, we do have electives that we offer to our students, you know, through music, art, and an engineering program in which the students actually take during their academic week as an elective. As an example of how successful that can be, our outstanding vocational student last year graduated from culinary arts, however, went through the engineering academy and decided that she wanted to become a mechanical engineer and decided to attend WPI instead of going on to a traditional route with the WPI.
Yep, yep. I got refused there.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
But he won't hold that against you guys.
What did they learn in biotechnology?
So biotechnology, it's a life science-based program, and, you know, for any of the programs, depending upon where they go, it can be bio-manufacturing, there's a lot of, you know, biology-based, you have DNA cell reconstruction.
So this prepares them, if they graduate, to work as like a lab assistant or in a lab?
They could start as a lab assistant, a lot of biotech companies require a college degree. One of the issues, and what we're trying to break in that, the stigma, is that most biotech companies, because they're a niche market and they have, you know, it's products, you know, that are specifically to their business, they don't allow, they don't really like to have anybody under 18 as well be part of that program. So co-op is a little bit of a stigma. Not realizing the skill of our students, we have been working with mass life sciences to change that, to get internships. They currently only allow interns from colleges to actually go and do internship programs, but generally don't hire unless somebody has a bachelor, a minimum of a bachelor's degree.
What's a chapter 74 certificate?
A chapter 74 certificate is a regulation which basically dictates, or is the regulation that we follow for all of our career programs.
Certificate in each of their shops, in other words, it would be auto body, or it would be auto mechanics, or it would be carpentry or plumbing, it would be a certificate in particular shop.
So the chapter 74 is from their shop, and then they get federal state credentials from other things they've done?
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Like ASE?
Right.
Or, you know, the auto mechanic.
Yeah, the '17 programs have 17 different, you've heard of the mass curriculum, what is the core framework for vocational programs, and each of those programs is a chapter 74 certified.
Okay.
On the next page, and I'm not going to walk you through the complete book, I'll tell you what's in here, but just a little bit of a look at the enrollment for the other seven towns, as well as the other, our out-of-district towns that join Assavet. School-wide special education enrollment, and then the Berlin special education enrollment is down at the bottom of the page.
Just in case someone tells you that we don't take out the Ashira's bed, we do.
And then throughout the book, what you'll find is there's some MCAS data. We're happy to say that we've made some increases in our English and science. We're still doing some work on math. We are a level two school, looking to get it back up to a level one. We had some subgroups which plateaued, and we're looking to correct that.
I mean, your comment levels are at, yeah.
There's five levels for school districts. Level one is the highest.
We're two.
We are at level two, but many of the school districts in the state move to a level two because they're stagnant in some of the subgroups in which they dictate that level one status or level two status.
We were a level one for quite a long time, but then as you kind of reach the ceiling, you know, it's hard to maintain that increase every year.
What they've done is, what they've done is they've.
Bottom line is, we're pretty good.
We're pretty good.
Yeah, they've basically changed the, what the pyramid is where everybody was doing too well, so they. So throughout the rest of it, you'll see there's some information about club and activities, the MCAS, snapshot of some other stuff that the students are, can access, the partnership with Quincy Community College, the ability to access 12 college credits while they are at Assavet. We are including and adding another additional AP class this year, we'll be going from six to seven. Part of the opportunity of students arriving at Assavet is, not only do they have the career program major, but we also need to make sure we address those students that are high-performing and want to excel in their academics before continuing that rigorously relevant academic program. You'll see some of the colleges that are there as well that we send our students to, and then we have some correct pathways in the back if you want to take a look at those at your leisure. One of the things that we mentioned last year when we came, and then again, the rest of the board is unaware, but we met with Tom back in October to kind of talk about the FY '17 budget process. And I just realized it says 2016 on the front of the cover for the student performance profile, but it's 2017. We talked about being fiscally responsible and understanding that you have a first debt service payment that will come into effect in FY '17. Some of the things that, you know, we have thought about when we have contractual obligations, and Chris will talk more about the budget, and we created a level service funded budget. However, those contractual obligations include transportation, our collective bargaining agreement when it comes to salary, and then, of course, healthcare costs. Other than that, we've made no increases in the budget. You'll see that it is a 2.97 increase just on cost of living adjustments and those obligations. And what we're going to do is, and we've already started the process, that looking at other avenues in order to help supplement the budget. Within the means that we've had for a level service budget, we'll be looking to look for grants to support. Some of the things that we'd like to do, we have a grant in capital from a grant to actually make sure we have trend-setting programs and equipment. We have something that we had supplied, submitted, excuse me, for about a 200, over $200,000 grant for a greenhouse that would have very technical hydroponic system, radiant heated floor. And what we're trying to do with that is we create some sustainability in the culinary arts department to be able to use some of the plants for their, actually feeding the community and the public. And it would also be used as a research facility for biotechnology, and then some of our science classes. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk about the budget.
Can I just ask you one question? As a school itself, how energy efficient is it? How green is the building on the new construction? Very dark, don't. I know there's a lot of work down.
Well, I think, you know, some of the, we're still, and I think we're still going to learn about that. Because of the system, they're actually still commissioning the system, our HVAC system, but with all the exterior doors, the roof being done.
Windows.
Windows being completely renovated and changed out, I don't think we're going to realize how energy efficient we are, at least for another year and a few years.
Are the students aware and involved in this happening so that they understand what we're trying to do, any importance of it?
Yeah, so. So I know, and Chris can speak to this more because I came at the last phase of the building project. And I'm happy to say that we did have a grand reopening, and if you ever want to come over and see what's been upgraded and updated, the majority of it is under the ceiling, you know, behind the ceiling, but we do have a few spots that we'd like to show you. During that process, the HVAC plumbing teacher is electrical, have all had opportunities to show their students, you know, during the building project, have been part of it. I think we're waiting to see, once the energy management system is up and running and the commissioning has been done, we'll see that the students will be able to have modules that are on that. I know with the boilers that were installed, we happen to be the only one in the state that had, in the actually northeast, that has these types of boilers. Please don't ask me the name because I don't remember off the top of my head. But it's been a training facility for their technicians from the company to come up and actually train on the boilers that were installed. So when those types of things happen, we're going to have that opportunity for our students to be involved at the final stages. But they have been, I think.
No, they have, yeah, they're lock and fire, by the way, as the boilers, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, the HVAC students have worked, you know, their shop is actually, aside from the boiler room, they've done some training in there, our owner's project manager has actually stepped up and really worked with the kids and has done a few lessons for them to teach them what we put in the building.
Sure.
I am going to just review the yellow book in front of you, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, as Ernie actually did mention, we did meet with Tom in October because we wanted to communicate to all our member towns, you know, about our plans for a level service budget, realizing that the first debt service payment of the building project would hit all our member communities in FY '17. This project in building the budget began, or, you know, always begins over the summertime before school starts. And so as an administrative team, we meet over the summer to come up with our priorities and talk about our needs for the upcoming school, or for the following school year, I should say, not even the upcoming school year. But we meet as an administrative team, and then typically in September timeframe, we present a list of budget assumptions to the school committee. Those assumptions were presented to town officials this year. And then the budget goes to the school committee, preliminary budget goes to school committee in October. They vote the final budget in January, and then assessments were voted the first week of September. So the process happens very early. It happens very quick, and, yeah, and so by February, the assessments are voted on. If you go to page five of the yellow booklet, you can see the budget that we are proposing, $19,610,000. And that budget consists of, you know, your federal, state, and local receipts. We are getting a little bit more, chapter 78, $4.6 million. It was $4.2 million last year, or this, this year, I should say. Regional transportation reimbursement, and then you can see our local receipts as well. We offset member town assessments with that tuition money that we received from our out-of-district tuition students.
How much is that?
That is $5 million.
Okay, I see.
You have homeless transportation, do you have any homeless that you're getting reimbursement for?
So typically, so for this year, we do not currently, we have in years past, and so, and again, it's a small amount, and we do have some money that we do get from the state. And so overall, member assessments are at $8.9 million. And you can see right below that, our foundation budget, based on the required minimum contribution in our chapter 78 is $12.8 million, and our budgeted net school spending is $13.4 million. So we're about 5.3 percent above the minimum. The state average is around 19.2 percent. But this is, the round 5.3 is average for Assavet, that's where we have budgeted the last number of years. So we want to be pretty consistent with that as we went to build the budget in FY '17. If you flip to page six, you can actually see the assessment information for Berlin. If you look in the gray shaded box, the assessment for Berlin is the $412,659. It's actually a decrease of 11.22 percent, or $52,149. You may ask, well, how come there's a decrease? And I think, you know, based on your required minimum contribution decreasing as well as the number of students, and I'll go through that as we get further in the book, the end result is a slight decrease for the town of Berlin for the upcoming year. So we continue to make.
Based on enrollment.
Based on enrollment, correct, correct. In addition to the operating assessment, there also is the capital assessment you see in the box to the bottom left of $107,61. That's the first debt service payment for the town of Berlin due in FY '17.
Is that, I keep asking questions. Is that based on enrollment, that assessment, or is it something?
So that assessment, that I can actually, we can go through it. If you go to the back of the book on page 13.
Previous three years percentage.
Previous three years.
So it's three. So at the time the project was approved, this was the three-year average, this was the debt allocation. It does not change for the life of the bond. This is the percentage, which for Berlin, it's 3.65 percent. And it will stay 3.65% to the life of the bond. If you, and just if you go to page 14, since we're talking about the capital part, if you go to page 14, you can see the overall breakdown, the allocation for the debt service, the debt for the 27 million dollar bond for the project.
It decreases every year.
It does decrease every year. The first year, because we've made promises to member communities that there wouldn't be no debt service payment until FY17, the first year is going to be slightly higher than any other year because we're basically paying an additional interest payment that would have been due this January. We deferred it until FY17. So that's where you can see the big drop off from the 100,000 in FY17 down to 78,000 in FY18. But, you know, since we're talking about the project, I'll say, you know, through three and a half year project of 10 phases, we've managed to stay on time on all 10 of those phases. And currently, we're on budget to close out the project. You know, this money, the 27 million, actually is less than what we originally budgeted for. And I expect that we may need to be a small residual to close it out. But overall, I think it's a, it's a good story that we, you know, we've managed the project very closely. We've worked very closely with the building committee that Lynn chaired. And right now, we just have a number of punch list items to close out, otherwise we'll be fully complete. We just need to go through the final audit with the MSBA.
So did you final bond this?
Just 27 million we did, yes.
So these figures are pretty well cast in stone as far as the bond.
They are, yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, the good news, I don't have it here, but the last estimates that we provided last year and the year before that, these numbers are less than that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I think just to, I don't want to go through the all the operating budget. If you go back to page seven, you know, as Ernie mentioned, this budget was a level service budget, so to meet all our contractual obligations. You know, with that said, our enrollment continues to increase. So it's gone down for the town of Berlin, but overall, we've gone up, gone to 1,133 students, as you can see here. You can take a look at our five-year enrollment history. The trend continues to move upwards. So for us to provide a level service, you know, budget while our students continue to increase, and not only that, but our special ed population continues to increase as well in our expenses increase as a result of that. And just on page eight, as we discussed, overall enrollment, Ernie mentioned in the book, there were 26, nine through 12 students, and then there's one additional postgrad for Berlin, so 27 total students. And you can see in the gray shaded box, Berlin went from 4.19% of the operating share last year down to 3.56 for next year. So it's a decrease of four students. So overall, when your operating assessment has gone down 11%, your enrollment has gone down, you know, almost 13%. So that's where things coincide with the savings in the assessment. I think if you look on, you know, page nine, it shows the history of how we've maintained and managed our budget very well. As we mentioned, the last two years, we've, you know, prior to FY17, we, our enrollment continued to increase, our special ed population increased, and those were large percentage increases that we asked for in the operating share. We managed to keep it under 3% this year, and I think we're very proud of our five-year average, which is 2.55% overall. You know, we like to manage the budget closely, communicate to town officials, and obviously provide you any information we have, you know, early in the process as well. And again, just the bottom chart is just the overall breakdown, 19.6 million. 10.6 of that is made up of state, state aid and other receipts, and then the 8.9 million of assessments. So as our overall budget continues to increase, we try to keep assessments less than what the overall increase is for the operating budget.
What's the difference between what you charge out of district students versus, I don't know what our average student cost is.
Yeah, so I can do that really quick off the top. I mean, you know, based on, you know, based on Berlin, I mean, it's 16,500 is the out of district tuition cost.
Is it in districted or between 10 and 14?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
We don't do choice. The state sets a tuition rate for us.
Oh, really?
Yes.
For the, for the out of district?
Yeah, except for the rate for the state.
Yeah, and it'd be 15,280 for, you know, Berlin. You know, so it's a savings, almost a thousand dollars, but.
And the other municipality is responsible for transportation.
Exactly, that's the other part that I was going to ask. That's, that cost I gave you for Berlin includes transportation, whereas the cost for an out of district student does not include transportation.
Although Chris is very good at helping the out of district communities get a good deal on their transportation and putting them together so that it works.
So be happy to answer any other questions you have, but I think, you know, we certainly heard a number of town officials say that, you know, FY17 was going to be a tricky year from, you know, with the addition of the debt service payment. And I think if we can find any savings in the operating budget, we certainly were able to do that and meet our contractual obligations, not add anything else, you know, which obviously reflected in the savings to the town of Berlin.
I always ask you folks to look at the increase in the gross budget because there's so many factors that go into what you actually pay, whether it's reimbursement from the state or whatever, but that's what you should focus, I feel you should focus on, whether or not you think that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, with the 100,000 capital, but then we'd have a decrease, so it's not a terrible.
And the town was great to support us. I mean, all the towns were great to support us.
But you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
Seems that way.
No questions, huh?
No, I mean.
No? Flabbergasted.
Why?
She's wonderful presenting. It was very thorough.
Do you, do you think this is helpful?
Yes, absolutely.
Very nice.
Knowing all the students are doing is really great, too.
Absolutely, excellent.
I mean, if you can take a look, I mean, I'm always amazed at, you know, the number of kids that are spent kids that are there and the average GPAs 3.0, I mean.
Yeah, that's impressive.
Pretty good.
The other thing that I will note, and I would be remiss not to recognize Lynn for her many years of service on the committee.
Am I retired?
No, no, you're not. No, you're not, but I don't know the last time that it's been said, so I think I'd mention it. Was it 80, 82, I think was the time, I think?
No, 82.
When she started. No, no, yeah, 1982, I think, as a figure for the year, right, when she started, so.
I've been on the design board longer than that.
Really?
But she's done a fantastic job.
Thank God you're on, I have to watch you operate.
But, you know, thank you to the committee as well for your support, you know, and, you know, with us for building the budget and the access. I think it's, you know, what we did last year, it helped as we look at those names and addresses.
There's one program that I'm proud of that was instituted, and I don't know if you're familiar with it, the Junior ROTC. We do Junior ROTC. And we got hope to get 50 kids. We right now have 120.
Wow.
What was that?
Junior ROTC.
Oh, yeah, really, over there.
And actually, Bob Rainbow has worked with Gunner, who is the lead teacher. Well, he is the teacher.
He is the teacher.
In the Junior ROTC that you may be seeing some of them on Memorial Day.
That would be great.
So if they graduate from Junior ROTC, what's, and then go into the military, does that give them some advantage?
Two K grades up.
Nice.
We, we may be.
Yes, sure.
You can always see them, even if they're in uniform and out there in a straight line.
We usually send five, somewhere between five and eight percent of the graduates into the service, so I think it's helpful for them to have a chance to see what it's really like.
Yeah.
And it's a good leadership course for the other kids who don't choose to do that. We're looking for another ROTC instructor, and we're trying to find funding for it, so I may be telling you, you need to contact. I don't know why they don't put more money into these programs instead of doing a lot of money into recruitment.
I'm sure if you talk to Mr. Norton, since he's in military.
Actually, Mr. Norton is supposed to come and see us.
Good.
On the 25th, I think.
Yep. To speak to the kids.
But I think the federal, too. I think we need to go that route, and maybe Mr. Norton can give us some guidance as to how we could do that.
So, I mean, I encounter your students in community life, and I'm always very impressed with them, I have to say.
Very good.
Yeah.
My son graduated from AsaBET, and his, one of his best friends graduated from AsaBET as the maledictory, no, the second one down.
Salutary.
Salutary, went to, what's it, Lincoln Tech? Is that the one in Boston?
Technical Institute, yeah.
And then he went to Rochester Institute of Technology, got his masters.
Excellent.
So.
Very good.
Yeah. Great school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much so much.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
If you've got any questions, don't hesitate, we don't see them.
Yeah.
We'll put a chicken in your bush.
Anytime you want to come visit, give us a call.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you for lunch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you very much.
Thank you.
Good old evening.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
All right, good night. All right, we are going to go into executive session regarding possible acquisition of real property. I will take a roll call on that. Andrew, aye.
Big Fred, aye.
Boom, aye.
And we. So we should have closed the, back into open session. We'll take a vote in a couple of minutes about that because I want to be sure we get our award articles on there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Should we go to the award discussions?
Sure.
All right. First vote is for the BMS weather bug. Do we have materials on this in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
You explained it pretty well. I thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the, oh, okay, great.
It's just a bit much.
Yeah. And the amount that was requested was 15,740. I'd accept a motion to approve the award out of the.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on that? I mean, I thought, I thought it sounded like a worthy program.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the kids to get a little closer to what's going on around them.
Right, and I think, you know, it has, it has impact on people's awareness of things like global warming, changing weather patterns and stuff like that. So I thought it sounded like a good, a good program. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing done, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of awarding the full amount, 15,740 for the weather bug project at BMS, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. There you go. That one back. You got the town hall?
Yeah, whichever one you want.
Yeah, yeah, I was just doing them in the order that you had it. Okay. This, this award request is in the amount of 426,000. Represents approximately 50% of the project cost. That figure was requested because they are applying for a state grant in that amount, and they need to be able to demonstrate that there are local funds available for that.
So how much was that?
426,000.
Okay.
What is the total amount of that particular grant fund? I forget, 700,000?
Right now, it started out at 738,000. I took out 15,740 for weather bugs, so it's at 722,260.
Okay. Just to get a motion on the floor, I'd take a motion to approve this request.
I would second that.
All right, I'll make it. I know you won't make it. That, and as I say, that's just for purposes of discussion. I think one of the things, and I did talk to the 1870 Town Hall about this, I certainly would like to see, and my understanding is that they put an article on for.
Full amount.
For the, for the full amount. I would like to see, I would very much like to see some of this 426 come out of other sources for the town. And I would expect that if we vote at 426,000, if the grant didn't come through, and, or if there were other monies available, that we could reduce the amount that was being requested as a motion under the article on the town meeting floor.
Well, you know, they have worked on this project for years. They are one of the most prepared groups. They're ready to go.
Mm-hmm.
They have, I have sat in meetings where they have gone through every single thing, and they are trying to cut costs.
Yep.
And to me, this is money coming from this fund, which is entitled historical, educational, what else is on there?
Certainly, yes, it hits all of the.
It hits cultural, historical, educational, plus recreational. Plus, it makes the building usable to us as a town to have meetings in there. Because right now, it's not handicapped accessible, you can't have meetings. So I feel like this is a perfect project for this money, and I would go for the full amount.
Oh, yes, I'm suggesting that we, I certainly, and the motion says, an award of this full amount. As I say, if there are other sources for the money as it comes along, we may have an opportunity to reduce that. But yes, the vote today is for the full amount as an award.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I hear what Judy's saying, and they certainly have worked on it, and it's almost like an obsession, frankly. I'm, I'm just against the project. I don't think it's necessary. What is the downside of not doing it? The upside, this idea, we're going to use it for town meeting type of things, there's more room than we need right in this building for all of that at this particular time. And so I don't see it necessary. It's been perfectly satisfactory now going on 100, what, 50 years and a century and a half, and we had town meetings up there, and I just don't see it being used that much. There are alternatives for handicap access. They'll say, no, I don't believe it. I don't think it'd make a difference in a half a dozen people not attending something up there in any given year. And trust me, I've been, I've been to the, I've been to the, some of the plays up there and left one early, and if somebody doesn't get up to see one of those, it isn't going to render their life meaningless. And also, sorry, irks me that, you know, a bunch of us put tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of free time and effort into that, working together in a great community spirit, and none of these people were really there helping out on that. We thought we were doing a great service to the town, contributing. And now turn around and look for, I don't know, what is it, eight, nine times more money to put in, basically, the objective was to put in an elevator, than we put into the whole thing back in, when we, when we salvaged that building. It just kind of irks me, and the, there's one family that started a Berlin theater company, a couple of people, and they're very much against this. They feel that what's going to happen to the stage and the setting up there is going to prevent them, and they're pretty discouraged right now from doing anything there. And after they, you know, they paint. And after they, you know, they painted that stage, put several hundred dollars into the lighting, he was going to go up and paint it and had to go someplace, she paid seven hundred dollars to have someone finish the painting up, all this donated. And I just see this as contrary to the very spirit of that building, I don't like it. If you've read the old town history and read the statements of the founding, of the people, the selectmen at that time who dedicated that building, it's an eye-opener and that's my philosophy and I just, I just don't like this. I think it's going to ruin that beautiful setting up to there, that the historic curatorial house should be removed, period. But if we do a town bond, there's going to be plenty of empty buildings around to look at for that. And I just don't see spending the money on that, so I, I will be voting against it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Judy, you have anything else to say?
I just think that town buildings should be accessible for everyone in town in the spirit of the law and in the spirit of Berlin welcoming everyone.
Well, again, I just, Judy, I just have to respond a little bit. I mean, the building is legal right now, it's a historic building and it is legal. Of course, if they put that much money in it, it'll by law need the elevator. And as I said earlier, I, I believe, it hadn't been proven to me that there isn't a much, much less expensive alternative for assuring that people that need some sort of assistance to get to that second floor can't get it. And that hasn't been proven to me. And the other thing is, a vote against this at this time, I don't think is going to kill it. I mean, put it off a year.
It's just going to make it more expensive.
Keep putting it off and, well then, you know.
And the price will keep going up.
I just have to say no.
Okay, I know, I understand that. I think the other thing for me that's important to share is that we do have, you know, a reasonable possibility of getting a significant state grant on this, that the amount of money that we are awarding here is, is, is something that is meaningful only in connection with that support, really. And so, I'm, you know, I'm in, I'm certainly in favor of it. I think, all having said their piece, I will ask for a vote, all those in favor of awarding the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to the town hall elevator project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. And the board has.
I think the one I want to see is.
The, the funding requested on this is a hundred thousand, three hundred dollars. It was, there was a request for really two pieces, one to be expended in fiscal year two thousand seventeen and one to be expended in fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The amount requested for two thousand seventeen is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars and the amount that was requested for two thousand eighteen was thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Personally, I was thinking of, of a motion or an award on this of somewhere between fifty and sixty-three thousand dollars, but I.
I don't, I, well, I agree, I don't want to give them the whole amount. So, the first piece is twenty-eight, six hundred, which is the kitchen renovation. And then the bathroom foundation is eighty-eight hundred. So, that's thirty-seven.
That's an end wall replacement.
Right, right. Well, it says bathroom end wall replacement.
Yeah.
And then bathroom replacement.
Yes.
Another seventeen-eight.
Yeah.
So, I would say these three items come out to fifty-five, two hundred. And, and I would make a vote that we.
Give an award of fifty-five.
Fifty-five, two hundred, and, you know, if they get that done, they can come back and put in another request.
Okay.
But I feel that they have not been very timely in getting things done.
Well, I will, I will make a motion then in the amount, to make an award in the amount of, you said fifty-five thousand, two hundred?
Yeah.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, as you would expect, I'm against this on, on two levels, the level of the bullet house itself, as you pointed out, it was eighteen years, virtually nothing was done. Chimney was rebuilt, that had to be rebuilt. And then, after I got through leading the town hall project, I wanted to do some work on there and the quester of this didn't want anything to have that done, a tremendous amount of basically, basic work, foundations, sills, walls, all would have been done for zip. But, very difficult to work with the chairman of that particular commission. As recently as the fall or late summer in two fourteen, as you know, the building inspector asked me to help him do the bold work, which I did, in which case, oddly enough, the chairman of the historical commission was working with us and I helped him out and I thought things were going great. Then he came up with this absolutely preposterous letter, it makes no sense to me. And so, whatever money, they've done quite a bit of work since then, but whatever money it has been, has been basically wasted because it would have been done for nothing. And most of this work that wants to be done can be done for nothing at this time. When I work at something, Larry Brant works along, people such as plumbers and electricians come in and start to offer their services. One very skilled builder who put a lot of time and they paid quite a bit of money to do some excellent work on that a couple of years ago, interestingly enough, when I was doing the town hall, offered to do the kitchen for zip. I didn't even request it from him. Unfortunately, I had left that out about two weeks before and that was one of my big disappointments and that this guy is really great. But there's so much that can be done by volunteers and the volunteer spirit and that would even build a broad and engage the public more in our, the history of the town and working together. We had a great time on that town hall and we could, could have done the same thing on a bullet house. So, everything that, the bullet house could have and should have been done within five years after buying it, number one. There was a number of times when a lot could have been done through the years, but the chairman of that, through his whatever actions, drove the people away, they quit. And the one reason he and I don't get along, because I don't drive away very easily, I wanted to get that done, just like in a town hall. So, I think if we're going to give money to that group, the commission, I think we should give it after we've exhausted all volunteer help. And I believe enough volunteer help could be done so they actually have an occupancy permit in there pretty soon and then see what else we can get done by volunteers. So, I just don't see spending money when there's people in town that would contribute and I'm particularly irate in the amount of aggravation I've been through over the years, wanting to do a number of projects for the town, only be stifled and obstructed by this, with your blessing, incidentally. So, that's, that's the issue with the bullet house. Anything that's been spent on that outside the chimney in the past decade could have been done for nothing. On a bigger issue, I mean, this is a trend, whether it's a bullet house, whether it's a town hall, whether it was a Hearst House, whether it's the collection, whether it's a lack of a historical district by now, all revolves around the failure to perform that commission. And I think, you know, I can't imagine the President of the United States funding some department, a secretariat that was failing and failing miserably. So, I think we need to think about that.
I think there's precedent for that, actually.
And I think, well, you, you may be right. But anyway, that's my feeling and you two have always just sided without questioning and I think you could have at least, with a little bit of effort, I believe you two could have turned it around and everything would have worked out fine. But caving in and caving in, it just is the wrong thing to do. So, I think, I don't want to spend people's money when it can be done for nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do believe that we do not control the bullet house, it is controlled by a separate group.
Is controlled by what?
A separate group.
Excuse me?
It's controlled by the historical commission, not this selectman.
Yeah, Judy, who appoints this historical commission?
The selectman.
Right.
So, you think we should unappoint them all?
No, I think you should bring them in and I think we should.
I don't want to get in this argument.
Well, I do, because you're shirking your responsibility, you're always trying to duck it. They control it. We control the historic commission. The buck stops here, that's why we run for office. This is one of the two major reasons that I ran for this office. The historical, the lost opportunities, this wonderful town, the history in it, the things that could be done that haven't been done. And I think, indeed, due diligence, oversight, that's what our role is. We appoint that commission, we could have them in and talk to them. And frankly, Judy.
We have brought them in, both of them. And we have talked to them.
Really?
Yes, and you've been here.
But you never said, why don't we get this done? You merely listened to them, accepted that silly letter.
I listened.
And that was the end of it. Did you ask them what they've done? They've done nothing.
Actually, I have a list of things that they've done, this attached to this.
It's, Tom, it's a joke.
So, I have talked to the building inspector who has volunteered to oversee the work and they have somebody who they've also nominated to kind of keep it going, coordinate it. So, I think it's a, a way to get this done and Larry has said that, that he can work with it and, and try to get the whole thing, well, at least some of the phase is done. He's volunteered his time.
Okay.
I think Larry could work with me and with volunteers getting it done without the money and I think he'd be glad to do it. He and I work together very, very well. So, therefore, you don't need the money. Larry can still supervise. We're going to need someone's license to work under anyway, whether it's Larry's or, when I did the town hall, I worked under Gary Spinney's license, he overs, I was working for him, basically. So, we're talking about spending money when you don't have to spend it. That's all the issue is. There's no need to spend this money.
Okay. I think the motion on the table is for the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Yep.
I'll take a vote on that at this point, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thanks.
But I just, just so I'm clear, my role as a selectman, so you don't think we should, when we appoint boards, we should look for an annual mission, mission statement, set of goals, what they've done in the past, whether they've done good or haven't done anything? You don't think we should oversee our appointees?
We do, we, we review the appointments every year, that's not what we're, it's on the agenda right now.
No, but we could, we could call them.
You've sat here, we've reappointed people, you know, a number of years. So, you know, I mean, yes, I, I agree, I don't, I don't think that their performance has been as egregious as, as you do, certainly. I think it's been a credible performance from a group of volunteers.
It's been a horrible performance. If you don't have vision, you don't see what could be done, it's probably all right. When you look at the oldest historic building that was there when Thomas Jefferson was president, collapsing, when it could have been all fixed, there's a, there's a perfect example. The town hall, had to fight them and work around them to get something done. Here's a building that's costing the town, now you want to use town money when it could be done for nothing. We could have a historic district, but we don't because the people that own the most important structures in the center of town really don't want to be involved with the chairman of the historic commission.
Mm-hmm.
And I think a lot could be done. Not only have they not done it, but as I pointed out, and I just pointed out now, what they prevented from being done for the town far and away outweighs anything that they did do. So, they're on a negative, as far as I'm concerned, it had a negative impact on the history and historical preservation and appreciation of the town of Berlin.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Shall we move along to the budgets?
Do you want to close the warrant?
Oh, yes. We should close the warrant. So, we will add, you know, to the warrant, three articles, which we are basically to see if the town will expend the amounts that we, I mean, you.
So, we have an article for the weather station.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do we have?
Not for eighteen-seventy, we don't. Oh, not for historical, we don't.
So, we just need to add one article?
Yeah.
Just.
In the amount of fifty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty, yeah.
Okay, I'll put in the same category, it'll be in there.
Okay.
I'll send it to you for review.
Okay. And we have one for eighteen-seventy.
There is one in there for eighteen-seventy, for the full amount to be reduced as they might need it to be later.
Right, and then, are, we.
So, you do want three separate ones?
I want ours, ours needs to be on there too, yeah.
Okay.
But can't we do, if they do the nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, where, and then they would say, like, when we have revolving funds, four hundred and twenty-six coming from the Highland Commons mitigation and, I don't know, three hundred thousand coming from the Massachusetts Cultural Council and then asking for the rest?
Well, I mean, only that, yeah.
I'm not sure how they even.
That may work, can we put in a placeholder, let me talk to, let me, let me think about that, whether, I may be able to just drop that one off, but I want to be sure we have a separate one on for this, just in case we need it, okay? All right, I've accepted a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Well, I was going to ask Mary, did everyone who was on the capital plan get their articles in?
Yes, except for conservation, I don't have exact wording, but that can.
But you have a placeholder in there for that?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, I'll have it by the end of February, or at least early March before I leave.
All right.
And what is that one for?
Well, there's one, let me see, there's one for, well, there's one just to get a reading of the town on the rail trail, that's no funding or anything, just see if they wanted it on.
And we have a placeholder in here for that?
There is, yes.
Okay, good, okay.
And the other one is a local wetlands bylaw. And then the other one is a capital request for bonding for open space acquisition.
And how much is that for, does it say here?
Well, I'm asking for three million, I'm obviously not going to get it, we have to go to the finance committee, I'm not sure where that would come from, whether there's bonding or I talked to Dennis about it, but I'm open to anything, but I can.
And we have a placeholder in there for each of these?
Yeah.
Well, there is, Dennis asked today because he says the capital form is for a million, but, but he knows that it's been discussed as three million, so Dennis actually had a question about that.
Oh, I.
Stay for it.
Well, let's put it in as three million then.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
That's, I guess, three million then.
Yeah.
And what does the wetlands protection, I thought we had a wetlands protection bylaw.
No, we don't, it was, we, I think we passed it at a town meeting and it was voted down to the, it has to be ratified at an election and it wasn't. it has to be ratified at an election, and it wasn't. We did have, we adopted as a commission, a 25-foot no-touch zone, which developers honored for close to a decade, but just recently, it's going to be challenged, and we know it won't, won't hold up, because it wasn't properly voted on by the town meeting. But what you have in front of you is what was passed at a town meeting, I don't know how many years ago. About, like, eight?
Yeah.
This is a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, there is.
Eloise asked if it's exactly the same as before.
Huh?
Eloise asked if it's exactly the same as before.
I took, that's the wording I just gave. And we're going to alter it. It's hard to, you can't break it down, because you have to have all these extra sections and, for this and that and the other thing. If I highlighted in yellow the actual meat of it, it'd probably be one paragraph all told.
And then, are we putting both of these citizens' petitions on?
Which ones?
Well, the drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts?
They submitted sufficient numbers, but the town council is going to review that in terms of the two-year, substantially the same article rule.
We can pass over it if it--
Okay.
And what's the other citizen's petition?
Chris first.
Oh, that one, okay. And he submitted, yep, so, yeah, those are both on.
Okay. And I didn't see it here, but did you put in the ones from the Finance Committee? They typically were the--
Yeah, there's placeholders, it's, yeah.
They were typically at the very last two articles--
Oh.
--on most town meetings. I don't know how they ended up--
Oh, it's to reduce the tax rate?
Yeah, they ended up being taken off, and we just, usually just kept them on every year.
They submitted an email on those and--
Usually you put them at the end, because that's when you know how much money you have left?
I see.
Anyway, as long as they're in there, that's fine.
It's an amount into stabilization and its amount to reduce the tax rate.
Yep.
Those two.
Yep.
Yeah, they're at the bottom of page three and the top of page four.
Okay.
So move it to land.
Yeah.
And now this goes, I mean, we can take a look at the order and fiddle with it if we want to.
Okay.
We should do that next week or so, but now that the target has stopped moving, we can take a look at those things. Okay?
Yep.
All right, then. Okay, we have, I'm going to set this one, we'll take this one up last, because you said it had, this one was more complicated, and then we can go right on to that, that other point.
Okay.
So, but we'll do the wheat, which--
Are we going to close this?
Oh, yes. I thought we, yes.
I think we took a vote.
We didn't take a vote. Motion to close was on the table.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on, we have a wheat budget. $3,000 level funded.
Well, you know, we talked about this last year.
We did.
And do we have any documentation about what they do, or?
They provided, it's folded over on the bottom there, Tom. Data for the 2015 town report, which I gave to Barry, about the number of people served.
Their client, 70, 120 clients visiting the community cafe. I don't know whether that means multiple visits, regular attendance, or one-time visits, I don't know.
Three people visiting often.
Yep. No, yeah, I just don't know whether that's all, I tend to read that--
One person going 120 times?
Right, right. I mean, I tend to read it's all client visits using the community cafe, at 120. So I would think that that would be the number of visits, period. Could be 10 people, could be--
Right.
Two, could be one. Number of households using the food pantry, it's 73. The household members in those is 106. No one is using social work services. The breakdown of food pantry and cafe users are 59% adults, 33% seniors, and 8% children. That's what we have.
So the food pantry downstairs is run by wheat?
No.
No.
No, they have their own--
The wheat has the federal government food--
USDA.
USDA. So if you, you can go to both the wheat one and the Berlin one.
Right. So?
I think next year, we need to tell them to come in and talk to us. Is that worth $3,000?
It's hard for me to tell.
It is hard to tell.
If we approve it right now, and ask them to come in within a couple of meetings, whenever we can squeeze them in, based on that--
We can certainly reduce the budget line on the town meeting floor.
That's true.
I think they owe it, you know, they owe it.
I think that's a good idea.
It's--
That's a good idea.
So I would suggest that we--
I remember one came in, and she actually didn't know what she's talking about.
Yeah.
Yes, it was really--
That was two years. Last year, they, they were transitioning to new leadership.
But I think that's a, that's a decent idea. So I would accept a motion to level fund this at $3,000.
So move.
And then we can have them come in, and if we feel it's not worth it, we can--
Reduce it?
Yeah, we can reduce it on the town meeting floor. All right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or we could tell FinCom we're reducing it. They'd be happy.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Oh, wait a minute here. So I signed this, not the blank one? Mary, this one?
That one, yes.
Okay.
In fact, opened a signature today. Please--
All righty. Okay, we have closing out Department Number 699, county aid to agriculture. Previously, we had funded this with $1. And--
Hasn't been used in years.
Yeah.
It was a vehicle for funding forage programming, but money doesn't flow through the towns for forage programming anymore.
Yep.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, workers' comp insurance, it was $40,000 last year. It is going up to 42,400. This is just a rate increase, correct, Mary?
It's only an estimate, and it's because workers' comp is a class, they have more claims and more costs. So that's the best that the company representative could tell us. And he said otherwise, we would be waiting for several more weeks.
Okay.
So we had been waiting for weeks at this point.
Yep.
And it was the best number he could give at this time.
All right, yeah. I'd accept a motion to, accept this budget moving up from 40,000 to 42,400.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Property and liability insurance, increasing from 83,200 to 86,528, an increase of $3,300 and 20, $3,328.
Also, the representative's best estimate.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Only, I mean, we have no choice over this, right?
No, and I mean--
We can't argue it or anything. It's more than a three.
Yeah.
When the invoice comes, we'll have to pay it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and that, I mean, the increase isn't huge, but--
For what we get out of that insurance?
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Soon 100 grand, possibly.
Yeah, we might get 100 grand back.
Right.
What was that, furnace, roof and stuff?
Oh, no, liability, I mean, this is what--
Yes, it's, I mean--
Paid Maplewood.
What?
Paid the Maplewood liability.
Also BBS.
And BBS.
And BBS, yes. So we get--
Got it.
We get some value out of that one.
Got it.
And I have to say that they've been good, you know, they've been good to work with them, and we've had to make a comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
We work with them, but you-- I do.
We now have the accountant's budget. And did people look at this in the emails? Because it was--
I did.
There's some changes to this.
But I'd like to hear it again.
Yep.
Basic figures.
Yep. We were going up from 61,627, which was what was approved in 2006, to 72,946. That was the hourly rate that we had talked about before, plus, plus five hours to bring her up to actually 40 hours in a work week. So that's what those two things are about. It's a significant increase, mostly because of the adding the five hours. The wages part-time, it was going up from $9,314 to $12,459. The reason for that is that we now have an assistant in who does work at a higher level, and increasing the, the number of hours to 25. She does, I mean, to do the basic bookkeeping functions and so on. So that was how that figured.
And what is she at right now for hours?
12.5.
So we're going to double the odds?
Well, I mean, that's all the bookkeeping runs, you know, for this place runs out of that, that office.
Yeah. I mean, the only, it's, I mean, I think we'd get great service out of it, you know, but, and not to be misread, but I mean, the work has been done through the years, and then a lot of work increased, so it's gone up. But now, she's got a new, apparently, person that's a little more qualified, and so she's going to double hers and then increase her own--
By five?
Thirty-five, forty, by 10, 12%. Is that, I think because of this kind of confusion that's been going on with our finances here, and the treasure's office, not because of the treasurer, but in, in the accountant, it's been quite a burden on her. But is that going to slack off? I mean, I think they're catching up and things are leveling out a little bit. I, I see giving them some more, but we're going to go add another full-time employee onto the town. And I think we've given a good raise and a couple more hours to her, I can see that. I don't know. I just think, I just feel that it's our obligation to at least question it. I'd like to know, hear a little better explanation of it, since they're not here right now, I don't know. But I'll go along with you, you two frankly are closer to it than I am, so the financial aspects of it.
Do you know what the town budget is for this year, Walter?
Yeah, 19 or something like that, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, and if, you have to, this, all the accounts payable goes through there, all payroll goes through there, all, you know, so it's all the bookkeeping elements, as well as the sort of accounting and auditing elements. We looked, I looked at some comparables, and this puts us, you know, this puts us in line with what, for instance, would be in a Bolton or whatever, and, you know, one of the things is that these, if you have a town, you have all these elements. It doesn't matter much whether the town is 3,000 people or 5,000 people.
Right, 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 right.
You still have accounts payable, you still have--
Yeah, yeah.
Salaries, you still, you know, and--
Yeah.
Every grant goes through her, every, I mean, you cost her work when you get grants for conservation. She has to put work in to do, she has to follow your grants.
The returns on those and following those, and that, you know, and, and we all know that the regulations are getting more and more complex and more and more time-consuming.
And she needs time to argue with us over where money should go.
Yeah, maybe she doesn't need that many hours. Maybe she doesn't need that many hours.
I think the fact that we don't have a full-time person is kind of amazing at this point. I'm sure she puts in the hours.
Okay, I'll buy that.
Yeah.
I'll buy that.
Okay. I was just looking at it as a point, that everything you say is true, but it hasn't--
No, and I, I mean, I did speak to her, you know, and obviously, we've been trying to work on this and address it piece by piece over a number of years.
Sure.
I did speak to her. I do think that if we can accomplish this, I think we have her to a fair point with a, you know, a reasonable amount of support--
Sure.
--at this time.
Okay.
So I don't see this as a curb that continues. I see us aiming toward, you know, a certain point, and I think if FinCom approves this, I think we've largely gotten there.
Okay.
But, but, you know, we have been trying to bring it along year by year.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none. Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think that gets us through the budgets, except for Larry Brant's. And you said that you had some questions that were related to--
Yeah, it's only, you know, I just want clarification on different services. We had a discussion, I don't think you were in the room, Judy and I and Mary had it last week, about more hours needed for the building inspector's clerk. And, and I mentioned that, I thought, Conservation Commission hasn't, we have a workload, but we basically have done, you know, the minutes and stuff like that over the years, and I think everything was all right. And I just think when it comes to legal matters, I thought it went through the selectman's office to deal with town council and stuff, but I don't know. So anyway, Mary explained some of the things we did, and that was all right. I didn't see any decision made. And then I get a copy of a email sent to Ashley, which was a little unusual, I think that was the attitude, it should have been sent to me first, saying that, that this office won't help her out at all, and that come through me to take care of it. So, again, I'd have to get--
So this office?
Yeah.
Or--
Well, we're talking about the, the building inspector. No, but the point is this, if, if, the point is this, if indeed, there's no assistance from our secretary on dealing with town council or anything, and that's going to be shifted towards the building clerk, then I'd have to rethink whether 19 hours is enough of that. So I guess, I guess what I'd like to know, Mary, detail, what exactly do you do for Ashley? What were the items? You rattled them off pretty quick last week. I only, I only assume that you've been doing things that kind of meant communication between the commission and the, and the town council, and I don't want to see the Conservation Commission doing that. I think we should come through the selectmen, but--
She wasn't asking for town council access.
Excuse me?
She was-- She was not asking for town council access in her email.
Oh, what is she doing here? Attach it documents? Are these things, these are things that I think have been done by this office, maybe I didn't realize that they were going through this, but for years...
What are they?
No, this is you requesting maps, and then she sends them to Mary.
No, that was actually today, that's separate than, than what he's talking about.
This is what Ashley asked Mary to do, that has never been asked before?
She was submitting, Tom, the contract that you were here for this discussion last week, she, you signed a mass standard contract form for the Oberg property.
Yep.
And she said originally in one email that she was going to make Walter a point of contact, but because she had such difficulty communicating with the Conservation Commission, she wanted to make the selectman's office, because it's staffed, be a point of contact for the, for the contract. Then she sent a separate email saying, no, I changed it, I'm gonna make, I forget exactly what she said, but her point was that she has a hard time getting through the Conservation Commission. So I wrote her back saying, the Conservation Commission doesn't require administrative support per the chairman, but this office is the point of contact for the Board of Selectmen.
She calls me every day, almost, she has no trouble reaching me, I don't have to talk to her about that, she, because she asked me about it today, and she seemed a little embarrassed of what, what was going on, so I...
This is, this is a situation in which the state might be calling, because it's a contact that's given on the contract.
She was completing the contract herself, and she was trying to figure out who she was going to make the point of contact for it.
I think that it would be easier for everybody if you just used the land clerk, which is what we had kind of planned on, and have her be the contact point for conservation. And then, she can get in touch with someone from conservation, instead of having half this stuff go through Mary, and then if somebody leaves conservation, you don't have to change all your point of contacts, you still have the clerk as your main, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying to Judy, I guess, I guess I'm just old-fashioned, I mean, I'm not afraid to be the contact if, so attach...
This, this is a number that will go in the contract that goes to the state, and so it would be the number that the state would call.
Oh, I can do that.
I didn't instigate the email, though, Ashley...
It'd be my personal number, though.
Well, I mean, we have here as a description of the land clerk, is that, that they'll provide support for Conservation Commission, so you have the ability to use her.
Okay, but I would also say this, that this is a grant that is done by the Conservation Commission.
Well, I don't think it's the point of just this grant, I think, you know, she got maps today that were for conservation, I think there's just a lot of stuff that comes through here that's not, you know, state or lawyer stuff.
The maps were mistaken, never should have been, they had no reason to send it here, I don't know, you know why they did, so that, that was nothing.
Because you copied the selectman's office in the first place, so they applied all and sent the maps.
Yeah. Oh, I was just wanting, just trying to keep you apprised of what we're doing, some of the things we're doing, but...
There's a lot of copying of the selectman's office on Conservation Commission matters, which is fine, other than it takes time, I mean, it's just another thing to put on the plate, is to review and forward to all the selectmen, you know, Conservation Commission matters, it's fine.
Well, I can, I can stop, nah, you feel the way I do about all the selectman's emails.
But you are a selectman.
I kind of figured that's what you were doing.
I was just doing the, I mean, you can, it doesn't take any time except to flash it on, it don't, it never takes any printout or writing, I can stop doing that and flash it.
Well, I just don't know, are you sending them to me because you, that, like, the maps today, I asked you, do you want that to be copied to the entire board?
No, no, no.
But you copied the selectman, and I'm nobody but the secretary, so the communications to the selectman's office, I tend to pass on to the board.
All right, from now on, I won't say anything unless I want it on the thing, I just wanted those, my two colleagues just to say, oh, they're working, they're not sitting around doing nothing, that's all, it's just a courtesy thing more than, it's never...
And that's okay, too, if you, if you wanna say something that's just FYI, then say that's just FYI.
FYI and then...
Yeah, okay. FYI only, you know?
All right.
That, yeah, not for action, whatever.
Okay.
Well, I do think you should consider using...
I will.
Using the clerk.
Yeah, 'cause it really isn't much time, it's, she can certainly do that.
Okay.
Yep.
So you and Ashley can get together on that, because it's, after all, the Conservation Commission's contract.
Yeah, and I don't, right.
Okay.
And I'm not worried about it being much of a burden on the clerk to increase the hours anymore, I think the 19 hours are still, that's all I was thinking about.
So if Mary, if Mary gets stuff from conservation that isn't legal or anything, she can just shift it over to Julie?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, then. The budget request from Larry Brant has the cost of living, et cetera, and then the additional hours that we had discussed previously, raising it to 19 hours. Everything else is level funded, I accept a motion to approve this budget.
I so move.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, did you support that, or are you opposed to it?
Aye.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So there's the last budgets. And then, I think, so we've done two, we've had the discussion on 2B, right?
Yep.
Okay, and so that leaves us with the FinCom request for a February 29th meeting, RE the fiscal year 17 budgets and the ATM warrant, and I think, yes, by all means.
They're all here, and I'll put them first in the evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, do it, it's like 7:15, or, yeah. Okay? And leave a good half an hour at least on that, maybe 45 minutes, I think we may have discussion on a number of points.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would actually not schedule another appointment until 8 on that night. Any other business to be brought before the meeting, and then I'll ask if anybody wants to review any of the miscellaneous correspondence? Any other business to be brought before?
No.
Okay. Any...
I do kind of generally wanna talk about F.
F?
So there's somebody in town who has an Airbnb, yes.
What is that, by the way? Is it a chain, is it a chain or something?
No, it's a, it's, you can go on the internet...
It's basically like a social network.
It's a service, and you, you can put your, if you have an extra room, you can put it up for rent, or you can look for places to stay. And it's not regulated, although I think the state is looking at something right now. But, so there's somebody in town who does an Airbnb, and so the question was, the Board of Health found out about it, and they're going to be inspecting it?
Yes. Food inspection and lodging house type inspection.
We don't have any kind of regulations on it. I, at this point, don't kind of feel like we have to do anything, but...
Right, good.
In theory, you might have to, what was it called, boarding house? No.
It's an innkeeper.
Innkeeper.
Some towns have something called an innkeeper license.
I don't know, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be an epidemic, and, you know, but some people may need a few extra bucks or something, and...
Well, in some towns, like in Boston...
Yeah, well, that's Boston.
I don't think we have an awful, awful lot to offer.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think there are things that are stirring on the state level, so certainly we should keep an eye on that. Yeah, it, if we were going to have a session on that, I'd suggest that we invite the Board of Health and the Planning Board as, as well, if we're gonna have a session on that.
I guess we'll just have to, I looked on, that was like the only one I could...
Back burner it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just briefly, by the way, the sub watershed map, number J there, I just sent it to you 'cause it is rather interesting, I called, I called in, and they can produce these maps of watersheds, and they calculate the area on them and all this other stuff, and...
Yeah, it's good stuff.
If a watershed has at least a square mile, then it is a river, no matter what, you know, and this guy that got a perennial declared an intermittent, so he could put in four houses, the area of that watershed was .89 miles, square miles, so that's what I was really looking for, but it, it's interesting to look at where the watersheds are.
I would note, I would just note that the Conservation restriction on the Furstein property has been newly recorded.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're, we're good on that, I went in, met with Aaron, we went into the town council's meeting, had it all executed.
Great.
I had a very nice lunch with Aaron.
How's he feeling?
He's doing all right.
Yeah, he is.
Yep.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, what was it?